Welcome.
Everybody, this is Ms. Ainsley, whose mother is about to become the new principal of Viera Middle School.
Middle School in Viera.
The middle school in Viera. Sorry, sorry, gotta be careful about naming and stuff like that. We know that there's gonna be a different name, but as of right now. But I want to say thank you, Ainsley, for doing that, and that may be the best gavel that we've had in a long time. We really appreciate it. If that's any kind of indication of how the meeting's gonna go, we're gonna have some fun here. So anyways, Ms. McNutt, we welcome you to the meeting, and we're very excited to have you here. Good morning. The April 18th, 2023 special board meeting is now in order. I'm happy to welcome my fellow board members and the public. I would like to take the opportunity to remind the public that your appropriate place for public participation in the meeting is during your individual public comment opportunity, as identified in the agenda. Outside of your individual public comment opportunity, your role in the meeting is an observer. Paul, roll call, please.
Mr. Susan.
Here.
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Ms. Jenkins.
Here.
Mr. Trent.
Here.
Ms. Campbell.
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to the adoption of the agenda.
On this morning's agenda, we have one action item and one discussion item. Changes made to the agenda since released to the public include the addition of Item Six, Administrative Staff Recommendations, and a revision to Item Seven, Superintendent Search.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Alright, we're now on the public comments portion of this morning's special meeting. Comments will be limited to the agenda items only. We have two number of speakers, and each will receive three minutes. I will call up three, two speakers at a time pursuant to board policy and tonight's motion. You are allowed to address the board members by name, but not by staff or the public. The first two speakers are Katie Delaney and Susan Minch.
Good morning. I am here to speak about the superintendent search. I hope that this board chooses somebody that reflects the community. And not just that, but starts healing the lack of community, lack of culture in our schools that's, that we've seen from the youth truth surveys. We want somebody who not only is going to focus on, of course, the education of our children, bringing all the students up in their math and reading scores, but we want our kids to feel like school is home away from home, that their families are welcome, that, you know, that it's a safe place to go. And so, discipline needs to be high on the top priorities of this next superintendent, in addition to, you know, the education of our kids. And again, a safe place for our kids to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ms. Minch.
Good morning. I told Ms. Wright that I would be the white-haired lady at the back of the room, but here I am in the front row. My name is Susan Minch, and I live at 3020 Coral Avenue in Mims in the village of Scottsmar. I really want to commend you for doing a nationwide search for the next superintendent of Brevard County. I'm a former school board member myself in St. Lucie County many years ago, and when we changed from elected superintendent to appointed, all of a sudden, we had this tremendous responsibility of not choosing someone locally necessarily, but perhaps, but doing a nationwide search to find the very best person for our students, and I believe we did a good job. I am very pleased that you are using Dr. Vogel as a consultant. He's a former superintendent of St. Lucie County, did an admirable job when he served us. I want to praise you for your timeframe. I think you've done a very sensible job in the amount of time that you have allotted to prepare for your vote. I do have a son that teaches at Astronaut High, previously at Merritt Island High. He loves being a teacher in the system. I also have two grandchildren that attend Brevard County Schools. I encourage you to speak with the people who have actually worked with the applicants, because sometimes people can look very good on paper. And then, when you actually get to talk with people who have worked with them, you might learn some new information that's critical to your vote. I wish you well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Minch, and thank you for your service as a school board member years ago. That brings us to the adopt, that brings us. That concludes public comment. We're there for your willingness to address this public manner. Ms. Hand, would you please let us know about the item under the next action portion of today's agenda?
Today's action item is administrative recommendations.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
There we go. Any, is there any discussion? None? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ms. Hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just want to take an opportunity to thank Mrs. McNutt for your service to Brevard Public Schools and to tell you how proud I am to have you coming in as the principal of our new middle school in Viera. This is such an exciting project. I've been honored to work at it from the facility's perspective, and then to have you come in as our school leader, having worked with you at Hoover Middle School, I'm just so excited for the great things that you are going to do for our community. Your work at Hoover has been exemplary. You have all of those great community connections that you're going to need and will be so important here in this area. And I just know that you'll be just a tremendous leader, including your work on the Reimagining Middle School Project. Where you're going with that is gonna be awesome. And to be able to bring that to the forefront at our new middle school is just so exciting for me. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan, school board members, Ms. Hand, Dr. Sullivan, my directors and district leaders for trusting me with this opportunity. I am humbled and honored to be selected as the new principal of the new unnamed central area middle school. And I look forward to partnering with our community to build an amazing school. I have lived in Viera for over 13 years, so I know the excitement and anticipation surrounding this build. There was talk of this middle school when our housing developments were still cow pastures, and this school will be our neighborhood school. It will be the place that my own children will eventually attend, so the work is very important and personal to me. But anyone who knows me will tell you that I feel that way about every school I've ever been at. I pour my heart into my schools, and the staff and the teachers, the families, the students, the community members are truly extended family. I'm so grateful to have worked alongside incredible people at all of the schools that I've worked at, and I adore them all so much. I need to give a special shout out to my Hoover Middle School family. It has been an honor to serve at that school for the last six years, and the outpouring of love and support that I've received from all of them is just overwhelming. My biggest fans, though, are here with me today. Without the selfless sacrifice of my family and my closest friends, I could never do the work that I do. So, thank you so much. I'm so excited to build a new school at a time that we are reimagining middle school for all of Brevard County's students. Thank you so much again for this opportunity, and I can't wait to get started.
Does anybody want to talk about the opportunity of the middle school? Anything else? Do, Ms. Hand, would you like to, like, let some tidbits out about what's coming? Or are we still holding that behind the black wall and all this other stuff? What's going on?
We're doing some great stuff there. Let me just leave it at that.
Ms. Hand, we, we met, we had a meeting with all the Suntree parents the other night, and that was a packed cafeteria full. And they were concerned about being a part of it, and they were happy that the board had moved forward with the way the direction did. And I was sitting there, and I kept trying to say, like, can I tell them what's coming? And they were like, Ms. Hand keeps saying, no, no. So when you're ready, let us know, because there's some of the most incredible things that we're doing there. But then, what everybody needs to also understand is, not only are we doing those at Viera, but the reimagining that you are leading throughout the entire county ensures that this isn't just, we're dumping a bunch of resources towards one school, that we're actually reimagining across the district. And I think that it's well deserved. I think it's well needed, and your leadership in that perspective is gonna be amazing, not only for our middle school, but then also for the rest. So, did anybody want to say anything, you guys? Ms. Jenkins?
Another one bites the dust in District Three. Mrs. McNutt, your students adore you, your staff respects you and loves you, and most importantly, you do the same right back to them. You are the most genuine, kind person I have ever met in my life, and you couldn't have said it any better. But you pour your heart and soul into every single thing that you do, and one of my first real moments with you when I visited Hoover was kind of during the holiday season, and you were pouring your heart out to me about how sometimes people forget, you know, you're in a beachside community, and we often expect some of those students to come from the most affluent families, and we forget about those kids that don't. And your office was just stacked with wrapped presents and presents to be wrapped for those kids. And, and I know it's not just you. I know it's the staff there at Hoover and the, and the amazing PTO that you have. But you, you truly exhibit what every educator believes that they care about when they come into this profession, and I respect that so deeply. And I respect your leadership ability, joining the reimagining middle schools, being an integral part of that conversation. I think you are the perfect person to move us forward into this new school, and I'm happy for you that you're, you're in your home community where your children are gonna go. So you will be missed. I know you'll be missed by your staff and your students, but congratulations, and I'm really proud of you.
Mr. Susan, would you like to do a group photo?
Yeah, I think, I think we want to do that. Ms. Sullivan, did you want to say anything about the new things that are coming out in the middle school? Like, put her on, because you seem to be... Shh! What? What's that? Oh, did, did you hear that? So there is, I don't know if you guys heard, but she just said that satellites are coming, and that's not like some, there is actual satellites for NASA that are coming and gonna be a part of it. So we're gonna, there's some really cool stuff. Thank you for breaking a little bit outside the boxes, Ms. Hand won't do. I promise you, I'll cover for you. Thank you. Yeah, let's get a picture, you guys. Thank you, everybody. We will now move on to today's discussion item pertaining to the superintendent search. FSBA will lead the discussion. Does any board member have anything further to report or discuss before we get started? Nope, go ahead.
Okay, we are here today to move forward in our superintendent's search. First, we're going to have board discussions similar to what we did when you decided who your semifinalists were going to be. We're gonna ask you who you believe the board ought to bring in for a face-to-face interview, and then we'll reach consensus over how many and which applicants you'd like to see in face-to-face interviews. From there, we're going to talk about how that interview process is going to go, because that's next week. And I've got some, a number of questions I mentioned to you before that I've arranged thematically to fit into your strategic plan. So we'll ask each of you to take a category from the strategic plan. And for the public interview, you'll be the person asking the same questions of each of the applicants within that thematic area, so we'll talk about that. And Mr. Reichert is also gonna talk about some of the logistics related to next week, okay? Alright, so each of you should have a tally sheet that was prepared for you that has all of the semifinalists' applicant numbers and names. And what we'd like to do is find out from each of you which of these applicants you believe the board ought to continue to consider, bring in for a face-to-face interview. You should have read all of the written responses to the questions you provided. You should have seen the videos. I know that those were provided for you last week, so it gave you some, an opportunity to really spend some time kinda hearing a little bit more from each of the applicants from their original packets. And you also should have spoken with Mr. Gibbs, one-on-one, related to the applicants. So, is there any board member who would like to start?
If I can, if, when you guys were talking about, before you get started, if there's something you would like to say about the overall process, things like that, you know what I mean? Bring it up to speed, honoring each one of the applicants that may not, may or may not be discussed and stuff like that. But, yep, go ahead. I'll go, I'm gonna go last.
I want to thank you, because honestly, those video responses, I feel like were tremendous when it comes to really being able to see, hey, is this person able to answer a question genuinely from the heart and give us, you know, their perspective? I, I appreciated that part of it more so than the written response, and I felt like that was very useful to me as a school board member in helping make my decision over who would serve our district.
Thank you. We didn't always do the video responses, but we, just before COVID, we had started it, and then people are just more comfortable now doing that. So we really believe it's important for you to see applicants in different sort of scenarios.
Absolutely. It was beneficial.
Thank you.
What?
You wanna go first?
Oh, with my, okay. Well, just to be clear, are we gonna narrow this down to our top three? What, how do you want, how do you see this going?
Okay, so do you, when, when we were here last time, we said there was no minimum, no maximum, and so I would say the same thing today. But once we have everyone's identification of who they believe the board ought to consider, my guess is things will happen similar to the way they did before. There will be a few applicants that multiple, or at least a majority of the board believe ought to come in for an interview. But once we see where everything is, then the board can decide. Do we want to bring in three, four, five, two, whatever? I would recommend more than two. We, we really, right now, with the, with the market the way it is, think you need to look to three to five that the board can agree are the, are the ones that you really want to focus your time and energies on.
Thank you. I have to narrow mine down a little more. I have, I have one I have to...
Ms. Campbell?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I just wanted to say also, just, I appreciate the process. I think this was, this was great. And I know some of the candidates will maybe either watching this now or later, just wanted to give my personal thanks for, for the effort that was put forward. It was, it's continued to be exciting for me to see the quality of candidates that we have. I know there's been a lot of, you know, mess in the news and the public and the social media about the small number of candidates, but I can have to just point out, we, we received more than some of our fellow districts around the state who are also looking. And just some really quality people with great experiences. So I appreciate all the work and effort that was put in. So I have three that I, and I could maybe be talked into a fourth one. But I have three that I'm going to, to give you, and let me just make sure I've got the right numbers here. Number nine, if you want numbers, or if you want names, I can do the two.
I just want to confirm. Number nine, Scott Schneider.
Scott Schneider, yes. Number 22, Jason.
Weisong.
Weisong.
Number 22, Jason Weisong.
Yes, and number 26, Pete Locata.
And number 26, Pete Locata. So I've got numbers nine, 22, and 26.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Jenkins, Mr. Trent, you guys ready to go? Ms. Jenkins?
I'm triple checking something here.
Okay. Mr. Trent, you ready to go?
No, same here.
I, I feel a bit pressured with her only doing three now. I'm like, oh my gosh, I have six.
No, you can have more than three. You can have six.
No minimum, no maximum.
You can have 11.
Okay. I could have, yeah, just one for everyone.
The last time I had 12, and, you know, was just about more than anybody, so it's okay.
Again, I echo your sentiments on the fact that this was hard to narrow down, because there were so many good candidates that, that applied, that I was very pleased. I thought, oh my goodness, after looking at these, we had a... I thought, oh my goodness, after looking at these, we had a lot of really great options here. Like Ms. Campbell, I had number nine as well on my list. I also had number 15 on my list. This particular candidate, I received a lot of letters of recommendation, emails and references, which I think speaks volumes to the candidate from different people in the community business. Some were churches, some were just all over the, you know, a lot of, a lot of references that were referring him. All right, I have to toss it up between these two and I don't know what to do.
You don't have to. Don't feel pressured.
Or none.
All right, I had number 18 on my list. I'm, I'm gonna stop there for right this minute, and then I have one more that I'm, I just want a couple more minutes of pause and I, I'll come back to it.
So for right now, I have numbers nine, 15, and 18.
Yes.
And Ms. Campbell, I'm a little concerned, you said last night you had 12? There's only 11.
Last time.
Oh, last time.
Last time, last time, no, I, I had a whole bunch.
I was like, wait a minute, how did this happen? Okay, we're good.
All right. Anybody else ready?
I feel like this is poker or something, like we're trying to...
No, I, I had...
This is just a starting phase.
Yeah, I was, yeah, Mr. Trent, you ready, or Ms. Jenkins?
Yeah, I'm gonna wait.
Well, Mr. Susan, you might as well just go.
No, I'm always gonna go last. Mr. Trent?
All right, why not? And I guess I, I'll be like, Ms. Campbell, I could be talked into another one once we go through this first round of the draft. But I do want to thank you for, for the setup, the, the work that you guys have put into this. I too valued the video response much, much more than the, the written. You know, putting, putting a face, also, you know, seeing the effort that the candidates put into the, the videos. So it, go with that, I mean, it was really good. All right, that being said, as you know, I only had four at the beginning, so I won't be expanding it, I actually had to reduce, reduce it here. So I'm gonna go with number 15 as well. And number 24. And I'm gonna stop there.
Okay, I have numbers 15 and 24.
I have more.
Okay.
So I've got nine, 11, 21, 22, 25, 26.
Let me review those numbers for you. I have nine, 11, 21, 22, 25, 26.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. I have nine, 15, 18, 21, 22. If you need me to read those, I can read them. Scott Schneider, Mark Rendell, Rebecca Rollson, John Stratton, Dr. Jason Weisong.
Okay.
Thank you.
Numbers nine, 15, 18, 21, 22. All right, so some of you wanted another moment, anybody want to add a tally mark? I'm not asking for you to, I just know some of you said you wanted another moment.
I, I have one more that I want to add, and I'm gonna speak to this individual just because they have been in the news quite a bit lately, this county has been. But we only had two people that applied that were actually, have been or are superintendents. One of them is Hernando County Superintendent, and I've had the opportunity to meet this gentleman on several different occasions through FSBA, and then also through Space Florida. And there is some news going on there that doesn't look good right now in Hernando County. And I, I would like for him to come here and just share with us what's going on there and walk through that, because I think there's some concern with the community over this individual. But I can speak to the fact that he is a very good individual, has been, you know, has had a stellar record and up until this last little bit of thing here that happened. So I'm gonna go ahead and add number 21 to my list.
Okay, so Megan, for you, I have nine, 15, 18, 21.
Yes.
Anybody else?
Because we only have...
All right.
Can I just, because I don't know if this is bringing sunshine or not, so I just want to say it in public just in case. I think it was this morning, I don't know if you saw it yet, but I... Yeah, they sent us an email regarding not two, that kind of goes along what you're saying. So just so you can take a peek at it.
Yeah.
I know you will, but...
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, so let's look at what we have. We have applicant number nine, Scott Schneider, who has four board members that would like to bring him in for an interview. We have applicant 11, Mr. James Larson, that has one. We have applicant 15, Dr. Mark Rendell, with three. We have Rebecca Rollson, number 18, with two. We have John Stratton, number 21, with three. We have Dr. Jason Weisong with three, number, he's number 22. We have Captain Stephen Kingston, number 24, with one. Dr. Kim Moore, number 25, with one. And Dr. Peter Locata, number 26, with two. So, Mr. Schneider has four. Is it the consensus of the board that we should bring in Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that would be applicant number nine. Then we have three applicants who have three tally marks each. One would be Dr. Mark Rendell, one would be John Stratton, and one would be Dr. Jason C. Weisong. Is it the consensus of the board that those three should come in for interviews? Yes, sir?
I, I would be for the majority, if there's three, you know, they're gonna move forward. But I just want to make it publicly stated that, you know, with the concern that we do have with one of the applicants in their current role as superintendent, I know it's just my view, but I would prefer that us as Brevard to stay away from that. And I just want to make it publicly stated that, that's, that's... I'm just surprised that he's allowing, or he's putting himself out there right now during this process. But no, I, I won't be saying yes on all of those, but that's just me.
I see a majority, and I heard you supporting the majority, so, okay, so then that would be applicant number 15, 21, 22. At this point, we have four that you're bringing in for interviews. We have a few additional applicants, Rebecca Rollson and Peter Locata, that each have two board members who wanted to bring them in for an interview. How do you want me to move forward with those two? Ms. Jenkins?
I'll jump in there. I think it's very clear, the way this board functions doesn't waver very much. So I don't think it benefits us to add more to the mix and waste people's time, bringing them here, their time, their energy, putting them out in the public like that, I think it's best to leave it at the four.
Okay.
I, to be honest with you, I mean, when we looked at all of these, I left it open to having a in-depth conversation with the top five, which we were kind of setting as part of the direction, or three. So I would be in favor of moving Ms. Rollson in as a applicant, like I had on the piece of paper before. But I, the main reason is, is that when I looked at the size of the district, when I looked at all of the attributes and stuff like that, I thought that was a good opportunity. So that's where I, I stand, is I would like to bring back Rollson, but keep it at five, that's all. That's my thought.
Other thoughts?
I'm a big fan of four. I think we've got, you know, between the resumes we've been able to look at and the videos, the written responses, the background information, our own, you know, getting on the phone. You know, people, I very much appreciate Ms. Minchin's comment of talking to people who work with these people. And I've had the, you know, the blessing of knowing some people who know some people and, and I'd be able to ask those questions. I think we can do some more of that over the next few weeks. But I'd like to stick with these four, because if we, you know, we start justifying one, honestly, the level of experience, I very much, I think that Ms. Rollson in particular is a rising star. But there, we have some great candidates who have even more experience, I feel like that, that, and just, you know, from what I've seen, and nothing against her, I think she's fantastic and is definitely heading on the right path towards district leadership. I just think with the four that we've got, they're so fantastic and so much experience, I'd rather keep it at these four right here. You know, because then I don't want to go to six, and we had two that had two. I know it sounds like you were withdrawing your ones, and then we ended with Dr. Locata with just one, but...
Oh, no, I wasn't withdrawing it, I was just saying, I don't think we need to add the twos.
Right, right, yeah, I'd, I'd rather stick with four, I think it keeps it a simpler process.
If I can just say one thing that I didn't state before. This is a male-dominated superintendent searches. And I understand that we go with the best experience and everything else. And everything you said, Ms. Campbell, is duly noted and well-respected, and every point you made was there. I just think that there's a perspective that a female superintendent or an applicant can give that may, may sometimes some of the male applicants can't. And where I fell, where I feel adamant about having Ms. Rollson come forward is not only that, but she may see some things that maybe others don't. And I don't mean to say it that way, but that's, that's just where my, my perspective was, is that she comes from a large district. She come, our entire demographics of our school district are majority female, and I think that there's something to be said for that. So that's where I hung my head, not that it's what everybody else says, but it's what I wanted to say. Thank you for giving me a second.
Other thoughts?
Jean?
Yeah, at this point, I think we've, we've done our homework. And I agree with Ms. Jenkins, at this point, we're, our minds are probably pretty set on who we have to see. I, I know there's, this was a very well-qualified group of, of candidates. And, and many of these are going to be superintendents here in the next month, including the one we're talking about now. There's, there's no doubt. But this is, this is where experience matters, me personally, experience in Brevard matters. And I wish all the candidates the best of luck, but I, I'm gonna stick with four. I, I, there's no reason that, there's no reason to waste anyone's time, that's where I'm at.
All right, so I've heard three people who are comfortable with four. Ms. Jenkins, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I have to, I'm sorry. As a young woman with a daughter, I have to say this. If the priority was to have female representation, there would have been more than two females in the top 11 in the first place. It's wonderful to think about that during the process, but that is not a justification to push somebody forward. That actually doesn't benefit females to do that. She's a wonderful woman, she's an up-and-coming, rising star, she has a bright future ahead of her. We can say wonderful things about her, but we don't need to say that we need her to go forward because she's a female. Thank you.
Okay, so I have four applicants that you'd like to invite for interviews next week, based on what I'm hearing. Applicants number nine, Mr. Scott Schneider. Applicant number 15, Dr. Mark Rendell. Applicant 21, John Stratton. And applicant 22, Dr. Jason Weisong. So I know you look forward, as much as you thought the videos were helpful, I can promise you that the one-on-one interviews, the group interview will be insightful, and that will give you some perspective on what you want to follow up with on the one-on-one. But nothing will give you what you need more than the one-on-one with each one of these applicants. So we really look forward to doing that. But for the board group interview, we have categories of questions. And I have broken them up, as I mentioned, thematically, based on your strategic plan. So what we need is actually for each of you to take one of the categories. And I don't want to suggest that you don't know your strategic plan, but we have academic excellence, exceptional workforce, community connection, and operational sustainability. And I can count like you can, that's four categories. So we also have a general leadership and board, let's see, what is it called? Board superintendent relationship, that's the final category. So we have five, board superintendent relationship, general leadership, and then your four from your strategic plan, academic excellence, exceptional workforce, community connection, and operational sustainability. So, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna need each board member to let me know, you know, what their priorities are. We can do a thumb war, we can see if anybody objects because somebody feels strongly about one or another. How would you like me to move forward with this?
I think the first thing is, is to say, is there anything that anybody would like to be, you know, that they feel strong about?
I would like to take the board superintendent relationship, that, that portion of it.
Is anybody against her taking the board superintendent relationship?
And that also goes with general leadership, they're combined. All right, perfect, Megan, we'll get you in that category.
I would like to take academic excellence.
Everybody okay with her taking academic excellence?
If everybody's okay with it, workforce has always been my thing, so I'd love to take that one, if that's okay with everybody.
Everybody okay with workforce for Mr. Susan? That leaves us with community connection and operation...
Are you going to take the leftovers?
Yeah.
Well, the community relations has been my champion area for the last four years, so I'm happy to take those questions.
All right, Ms. Campbell, I'm gonna put you down for community connections, which means, Mr. Trent, you're gonna bring us home with operational sustainability. Which is facilities, finance, business, all the business operations.
Just so everyone knows, that's what I would have chosen.
Perfect. I think they knew that, they're just making sure that it was there for you, available. All right, I'm gonna ask Mr. Reichert to come up. I'm gonna, before each of you leave today, if you'll stop by and let me give you your little section of questions, so we can talk about that. And Mr. Reichert, you have a few logistics you'd like to cover.
Thank you, Ms. Messina, and good morning, members of the board. I just wanted to give you a quick update on the interview schedule. As you know, the, any out-of-area candidates will come here next Wednesday. Your, one, your interview with the board as a sitting body will begin on next Thursday, that would be the 28th. Start, your first interview, interview will be at 8:30. That Friday, you'll do your one-on-ones, your first interviews on that day will be 8:30 as well. I do want to tell you that I'll be preparing now that we have the number of finalists identified, more or less a personal schedule for each of you, for both the days, the Thursday and the Friday. I will send that to Tammy and ask her to get that to you, to move forward with, so you can set your schedule. But the overall schedule, I know we've shared it with you multiple times, but again, I'll prepare a personal schedule for each of you and get that to Tammy. I have worked with Tammy, we have identified a hotel for any out-of, out-of-area folks that, that may need that. As far as the, the tours, we have identified staff members to, to lead the tours. While one finalist is interviewing with the board, the staff will kind of work with Russell to kind of set up tours. I hope to kind of have a, a quick meeting with those folks next Wednesday before the Thursday, Friday. And I don't know if Russell has any updates on the community people at this point. I know that some of the community folks were kind of waiting on the schedules and what times and how many we would need. So if I could ask Russell to give a quick update.
Good morning, board. We've worked with the Schools Foundation to identify six community leaders to, that freed up their schedule to take part in the tours. And so based on, the first interview started at 8:30, some of them will be able to make it. So we have Sharon Berry from Community Credit Union, Christine Noel-Ron from Car Rigs Ingram, Andy Day from Hurd Construction, Jim Clayman, who's retired from Harris, L3 Harris, Jonathan Wilks from Morton Smith, and Richard Miller from Miller and Hurd Wealth Advisors. They're eager to, to play a role in showing off Brevard County.
John, hang on a second.
Can I ask you a question? You guys mind if we do a one-on-ones? If I, if I, that's my daughter's prom day, is it okay with you guys if I do the interview, 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 and then on?
Whatever works.
Yeah, whatever you want.
Can we, when we do the interview schedule for the one-on-ones, I know you had it arranged just like by district or whatever, but if you could do, if the board grants me permission, for me to do the interview back-to-back-to-back and then have the fourth off, because I have a commitment that day, if I can be done and get out of here faster than...
Okay, so I just need to do the shortest schedule I can for you on that Friday.
Yeah, the earliest done, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay.
Only if we get pictures.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Thank you so much.
I, I have a question, well, maybe we're getting to this, I don't know. We're gonna talk...
We're gonna talk about the community piece next? The forum? I'm sorry, are we gonna talk about the forum? The forum?
The community meet and greet?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Yes, that will be on Thursday night, April 27th, starting at 6 o'clock. We're gonna have it here in this room. We'll have, as we've talked about before, we'll have the four finalists do a quick intro for six to eight minutes, and then once all the finalists kind of go through their intro, we'll have them kind of on stage and off and rotate through, and then we'll basically have the four corners set up for the finalists to kind of station themselves at, and then after the introductions, then we'll let the community kind of mingle around and speak with those candidates until around 7:30. So we'll start about 6 o'clock and finish up at about 7:30.
So we had talked in the past, the community would have some kind of form or something to fill out. Is it gonna be paper-based or electronic?
No, ma'am, it'll be electronic. Actually, I spoke to Tammy this morning, Ms. Messina will create the QR codes, we'll get those to Tammy, and then we'll have those codes posted around the room here, so as the evening proceeds, those in attendance can go and access that QR code and submit any thoughts they have about the candidates. Ms. Messina will kind of collect those that evening, and then as soon as possible, get them to Tammy so she can get them to y'all, hopefully prior to your Friday morning interviews. So you'll have some feeling of some of the comments that might have come from the community that Thursday evening.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question on that same, on that same topic? So, Mr. Gibbs, you had sent an email to the board suggesting that it would not be a good idea for board members to attend this community forum. Is that still...
Yes.
...the consensus that we will stick to? So even if the board is not near each other, or...
That's my recommendation, just because, no, well, it's not even the board being near each other. If the board were to participate, I think the board would have to be together throughout the evening, you cannot leave. The problem is, if you are rotating individually around the room, then the community cannot participate with the board as a whole. They can't hear what you're talking about with candidate A, or what Ms. Campbell's talking about with candidate, you know, C at the same time. And I think that's where the sunshine violation is a concern. It's just like when Pasco got hit with the sunshine violation for breaking their board into subcommittees that all met at the same time. The ruling was, the community can't follow those committee meetings at the same time, so they don't know what's going on in the other committee meetings.
So if the board were to attend and have a table that was designated that we were to sit at and not leave, I'm just asking, if we want to come and hear what they are saying at the community forum, would that be acceptable and would that mitigate that?
I think you would have to stay together the whole time. You cannot rotate around the room. If the board's interested in that.
I will, I mean, we might be able to solve some of this problem, just figure, I was not planning on attending, if like, that's a community's event, so I'm, I'm, will remove myself from the situation. So, I mean, if there was one of us who wanted to attend and the other four promised not to come, we'd probably be okay.
You don't have a sunshine issue at all.
Right.
We also could just notice the meeting and everybody could go there.
I think it's already advertised. The problem is, even an advertised meeting, if you're separate around the room, they can't follow all of you at the same time.
So we would have to be designated to a certain area.
That's what I, that's one. The only way to avoid a sunshine issue is to make sure everybody can hear what the board is hearing all at the same time or discussing at the same time.
So it's okay, because it's already been noticed, if multiple board members go, they just have to sit in a specific area.
Yeah, you can't walk around the room or talk individually with anybody. You'd have to be at a table together the whole evening.
Attach them with a rope or something.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I just want a clarification on that process.
And I also wanted to say that we're, we're talking about a feedback loop. In addition to having the QR code for the meet and greet, we'll also have a feedback loop for people who watch the interviews, and that loop will stay open throughout kind of the whole weekend, and we'll get that information back to you. I'll get as much as I can to you the morning before you do your one-on-ones, but then some additional information will come as people are able to spend some time and watch those interviews, and we'll get that information to you before you make your final deliberations. So there'll be a few opportunities for feedback from the community. Okay?
Can I ask one more question about the forum?
Sure.
So with the six to eight-minute intro, are they just gonna go back-to-back and then it's gonna break out?
Yes, that's the way it would typically work.
Because that's the part I want to be here for. I mean, obviously, if we can't mingle with the community, I don't, you know, I can't see what they're saying to the community, but I just want to be there for that beginning part of this.
Yeah, that's exactly how it will happen. We'll have, we'll introduce each one, one, two, three, four, and we'll do them in order of their applicant number. That's one reason we use applicant numbers. So even in the public interview, you'll start with applicant nine, Scott Schneider, he'll be the first one to interview, because he was the first one to get his application in. We'll do the same thing at the community meet and greet, each one of them has a few minutes. As you know, the gentlemen will typically keep one out, like in a green room, or, you know, out, so that they don't hear what each other says. The person says, hello, I'm so-and-so, so-and-so, they do their two to three minutes, whatever, then they leave, the next one comes in, and then after all of them have spoken, they'll go to their corners.
Thanks.
You're welcome. And then also, just so you know, for the public interview, the board group interview, once I get from each of you the questions that you're going to, that you're prepared to ask, and I would ask you to choose maybe between five and six, you don't have to choose my questions, but they're to help you kind of think in this thematic area, then we will be creating almost like worksheets, so that it'll have each category, you'll know the questions that are gonna be asked, you'll have a space where you can take notes from each applicant, and so you'll have a packet for each applicant with all the questions from each of your peers, so that you can take notes, and then you'll have apple-to-apple comparisons. So we'll be preparing that as soon as I get the questions from you. Then for your one-on-one interviews, you'll actually have the whole question bank, all of the questions in all of the categories. There's about 200 questions that you can choose, you don't have to, but I also want to point out that document that we provided previously, the questions not to ask, and a good general rule, and I think Dr. Reichert is the one who said it, but a general rule is when you're interviewing somebody for a job, you ask them questions about the job. You don't ask about the family, you don't ask about health, you don't ask about personal things, you ask about the job. However, like Ms. Campbell, your category of questions is community connection, so there'll be some pieces that are relevant, especially for the superintendent position, but by and large, you, to stay above the fray, look at those questions that should not be asked. In fact, in another...
Resend that to us, please.
Pardon?
Resend that to us, please.
We'll make sure that you have that, yes, ma'am. But no, in another county, one of the questions, they were looking at the list, and one of them said something about, tell me about your children. And the board member said, how is that a bad question? And I said, well, I want you to consider somebody that may have reproductive challenges and maybe wanted children their whole lives and don't have children, so then, you know, as an educator, do you assume that because they don't have children, that for some reason, you know, there's all sorts of things that you don't know about when you ask some of those questions. So if you can just stick to the little guidelines, now, if they volunteer, that's a whole different ballgame, but you asking is the problem, okay? And then, any other questions?
I don't have questions, but I know that you guys are walking through the same process in the same timeframe with several other counties, so I know we've got you hopping all over the state. I very much appreciate, you're pretty much April and May are toast, for whatever else you want to do in your life, so I, and your jobs that you do, so I very much just want to give my thanks again, because we're keeping you guys busy. And I also would like to say on the record that I'm glad that we're making our decision first.
Amen. Well, you are first, so that is true.
Can we, I know Mr. Gibbs had shared a little bit with me, but can we get, like, emailed a list of some of these, now that we've narrowed it down, some of these applicants who are in potentially other counties right now in the running and their finals, if we get information about that as well?
Oh, yes, Mr. Dr. Vogel actually has that, correct, Dr. Vogel?
Yeah, I've talked with Dr. Vogel, I'll send that out to everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions I can answer for you?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Messina. So I think that that is pretty much the rest of today's issue. What I would like to do is, if anybody else has any other further report, we're good. I did want to say that we have, oh, you have something to say, Ms. Campbell?
I know we talked about it last week, but we were reminded today. Thank you for the reminder, tomorrow is the purple up for military child, so we have an audit committee meeting. Remind everybody who's listening, it's gonna be here tomorrow, we're purple, or if you're here or not here, we're purple to honor our military children.
Yep, and I did want to echo some of what some of the other board members have said in the fact that we have had some individuals that have come out and said, you guys are rushing this process and everything else, and what you're finding out is, is that we're perfectly in line with everything else that everybody's doing, and it puts us in a position ahead of everybody else to select the best candidates. So us, you know what I mean, hurrying in the beginning was the success that we're gonna have by having the largest amounts. We really appreciate the opportunity, and if nobody else has anything, that's the end of the meeting.